Evening and welcome to the Thursday, June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five Troutwood Madison Regular Meeting. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education and Public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and it's not to be considered a public community meeting. Ms. Allen, would you call the row?
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, item up is the mission statement, which will be read by Board Member Alicia Kilgore.
The mission of the Troutwood Madison City Schools is to graduate all students prepared to excel in a global society with a commitment to lifelong learning by guaranteeing a challenging curriculum facilitated by innovative and dedicated staff, community participation, and state-of-the-art resources in a stimulating atmosphere.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is item E, to adopt the agenda. I need a motion to adopt the agenda. Are there any changes?
Yes, I do have two changes to the documents that I sent on Tuesday in front of you. I have a document that states amendments from Board Agenda sent out on Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, advances and transfer document. They indicate the original and then the amended amounts. And then on the appropriation document, there was one change for general fund, the original, and then the amended amount that increased by eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So I would like to submit those changes from what was sent out on Tuesday evening.
So I need a motion to adopt the agenda with the changes from... Mrs. Allen, with the amendments from the Board Agenda sent out on Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five.
A motion to adopt the agenda with the changes stated by the Treasurer?
Our second. It's been moved. And second, Ms. Allen, would you call the row?
Yes, Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes to adopt the agenda with changes. Number two is the consent agenda. If it pleases the Board, can I read the motion for all A, B, C, and D? Or do I have to read them separately? You prefer separately?
I would say just to...
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, item A, approval of May first, two thousand and twenty-five work session meeting minutes, and May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five regular meeting minutes.
And your B, C, and D.
Second.
You're gonna vote, I'm sorry.
That's what I was saying.
Vote them all. You're gonna vote on one time, but you can read them all.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, my bad.
My bad.
Approval of the girls volleyball trip, overnight trip from July twenty-fourth through July twenty-sixth, approval of the special ed model policies and procedures from April two thousand and twenty-five, and also the approval of the Corinthian Baptist Church and Joe Collins donation to the care closet. I need a motion.
A motion.
Second.
It's been properly moved. And second, Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Yes, Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes for the consent agenda. Item three is the Treasurer's report.
Okay, I have several things this evening that I would like to give to you. Okay, so the first item is the financial reports for May. We did have a finance committee meeting this evening with committee members Simmons and Carrington. We did review about twenty reports. I have included those reports under the executive tab for your pleasure to read the entire report. So the first report is cash reconciliation for May. The bank's statement balance is seven million, seven hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-four cents. We had investment balances of nineteen million, six hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-two cents. We had outstanding vendor checks and adjustments that totaled ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-four cents. If you add those together or subtract the ninety-nine from twenty-seven, you will get an adjusted bank balance that matches the district balance of twenty-seven million, two hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-two cents. The second report is a spending plan that comes directly off of the financial system or meta-system or USAS, as we call it. And it indicates, and this is for through the month of May and also fiscal year-to-date from July through May. And so you can see what we received in May and what we spent in May, as well as what is the total fiscal year-to-date of all of the revenue and all of the expenses. And if you look at the report all the way to the bottom, you can see that we still are deficit spending one point seven million dollars for the month of May, and that through the month of May is three point three one, three point three million dollars deficit spending. So what that means is that we are spending more than what we received. And then the last report was checks over a thousand dollars. The committee members did review all of the checks. There were no questions that I had to answer during the meeting, and so I'll just wait for a few minutes, and you guys can peruse the checklist, and if there's any questions, I will try to answer them.
Ms. Allen, this may be a little premature, but... But maybe you can share with us at a later time what the new state laws, how we're gonna manage our spending.
So we're still gathering information on that. Marla and I talked about it today. So hopefully, we can update you guys on the next couple of weeks when we really know what's going on, because it is just all over the place, Mrs. Cherry.
Okay.
And so we decided before we start talking and don't know the specifics, we would prefer to get all the specifics together and then update the Board, if it's your pleasure.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So I just need approval for the financial report for May.
Okay, so, okay, I need a motion to approve the May, two thousand and twenty-five financial reports?
A motion.
Our second.
It's been properly moved. And second, Ms. Allen, would you call the row?
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes.
Okay, item three B is a resolution to approve the advances and transfer funds for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. So I'm gonna go over these very quickly, but I want to make sure that you guys understand. So there's two columns. One is an advance column, and what that means is that when we advance the money, we temporarily, for five minutes, advance it, and then they pay it right back. So when we open the, open the financial system back up in July, we then put that back on and so that it's an outstanding liability. So all of those preschool, special ed, and these are all grants, Title I, different Title I's, Title IV and Title II, all of those, we are basically lending them the money so that their account can be in the black. And so you can see the twenty-six hundred dollars, the forty-three thousand, forty-three thousand, thirty-nine, one eighty-nine, thirteen, and two seventy-four, with a total of six hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and ninety-one cents, we will be advancing those, so that, so that the account can be in the black. The next column is transfers, and what transfers is are permanent movement of monies. And so basically, the general fund is supplanting, I guess, I don't know if that's the right word, but giving or making those particular funds in the, in the black. And so every year, and Alicia, you weren't here last year, every year we have, since I've been here for fourteen years, every year we have transferred three hundred thousand dollars to the Permanent Improvement Fund. And what that is, is that the, it's a bond that we pass to pay for the auditoriums, an auditorium, central office renovation, and that's through two thousand and thirty-four. And so we use that money to pay the principal and the interest on that particular liability. The next one is food service. Food service. I have to, I have to, I have to open this again. Hold on one second, because what I'm looking, looking at is not the same thing. Okay, so what I've attached to the, the Board docs is the updated document. So I was looking at the, the hard copy printout was the old document. So, and I'll go back, well, no, it's a, no, I'll go back. So the advances are a little different, and they are indicated when I, when I talked about the advances here. So the advances, the six thousand, sixty-nine hundred dollars for preschool, eighty-two thousand, special ed, forty-three for Title I, one hundred and thirty-three for the disadvantaged children, expanding opportunities, one eighty-nine, Title IV is thirteen thousand, and Title II is ninety-two thousand. That totals five hundred and sixty-two thousand, one eighty-nine, fifty-eight. Then on the right-hand side, on the transfer column, again, the three hundred thousand dollars to cover the locally, we call them LFI's, locally funded initiatives. We transferred, will transfer, upon your approval, three hundred thousand dollars to the food service fund. They ended the year through June because we posted payroll, so they ended the year at a negative two hundred and eighty thousand, eighteen dollars and twenty-three cents. And so therefore, by, by transferring the three hundred thousand, they'll start the year with nineteen thousand, nine eighty-one, seventy-seven. Ohio Arts Council, these, these two... These two, two grants were overspent, and so, and I asked why, and the reason is each building was scheduled, had money scheduled for the artists-in-residence. And the artists-in-residence did the mural at the middle school, and they did, I can't read my writing, they did other arts at the other buildings. And so that five thousand, that thirty-one fifty is a transfer of eighty-one fifty to cover the, the overspent, spent grants. A lot of times, artists would send invoices, and they just underestimated what that artists-in-residence program was, but everyone felt that it was money well-spent for that exercise. And I'm not sure, Marla, was that part of this, this also?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, and it's a grant that we most likely won't secure next year, but this, the, the gentleman that came and had the, that, that was, you know, that was, he was a part of that program. But we, we did have a lot of engagement and a lot of, you know, a lot of opportunities for our kids to, you know, to participate in the arts, and you see the mural work that we have, you know, have done, but, you know, at this point, you know, with, with us definitely tightening our bill, you know, those are things that we just can't, you know, can't afford anymore, but for this, for this year. And the same with food service, and especially for the new Board members. You know, food service is a reimbursable fund, but the, the amount that the state gives us for reimbursement does not cover the expenditures with regards to, to food service. So, you know, every year, we're likely to have, you know, two hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But on the other side, it's that versus two or three million dollars that some districts have to pay just for food because they don't get the reimbursable rate that we get. One hundred percent of our kids are, are free and reduced lunch, but often the, because they just reduced the, I believe they just reduced the, the reimbursement rate for meals last year again. So, you know, which we, we're scratching our head at, you know, constantly, you know, why are we reimbursing meal, I mean, reducing the meal cost when reimbursement, when we know food is going up anyway?
Right.
But, you know, we, we believe that Katie, Ms. Bayes, does a great job of trying to, trying to keep that cost down, but, you know, every year, you, you're looking at having to reimburse that, that fund just a little bit. And now I say a little bit, two hundred thousand dollars, not a little bit, but, you know, it is, you know, compared to districts that don't get the rate that we get, you know, they have to spend millions in, in food service feeding their kids. It went down last year, the reimbursement rate. So the meal costs went up, but the reimbursement, reimbursement rate went down. Yeah.
Wow.
And we talked about that at the finance committee this evening as well. But thanks for the explanation.
Yeah.
The next two, the last two, I should say, are related to the athletic fund, and this is not, this is not an anomaly. We have had to do this for, for years, and most districts have to subsidize their athletic program. And really just looking at it, and this whole thing about what the leads and all of that, and how far we have to go play, and we don't have a lot of home games, the revenue has been really reduced, reduced a lot. And so these two line items, we had, I wanted to bring in line, the first seventeen thousand, six twenty-five, that was related to the athletic event tournament salaries for the last three years, and that's just cleaning up negative balances. And then the seventy-five thousand dollars, the athletic fund itself was negative sixty, and I, I thought it would be best to have them start with something. So their initial cash for FY twenty-six would be fourteen thousand, one forty-one, fifty-four. And so that total, oh, I'm sorry, I missed one. Last meeting, we decided to set aside monies to fund our roofs, buses, and asphalt. And so I would like to transfer money over to Fund Seventy, so that we can have money sitting there to pay for that, the outstanding expenditures. Mr. Howard did send me the twenty-year capital improvement plan, and so that will support this one million dollars. I asked Scott Mays, who's the supervisor, was one million enough? He said, well, just, that, that's a good start. He said, it'd cost us about six hundred thousand dollars for Westbrook Village roof alone. So he said, that's a good start. So, so, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, there, I mean, if we think about our own roofs, when they come out and give you an estimate, you know, it's thirty-five, forty thousand dollars just for a house roof. So the total here, I'm asking the Board to approve my recommendations for, to end the June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five school year and the amounts that I indicated.
So I need a motion to the resolution to approve the advances and transfers of funds for the fiscal year ending thirty, June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
A motion.
A second.
And one, it has been properly moved. Second, would you call the row?
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes.
Okay, so, item, item three C. Item three C is a resolution to approve the amended appropriations for the period ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, and that is for this particular school year. And so this resolution covers all the expenses that we have incurred through, through this particular school year. So I'm asking for approval for appropriation of fifty-nine million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents, and that does include all the funds from general fund all the way down to our federal funds, miscellaneous federal grant funds. And so I'm asking for approval for that as well.
I need a motion to approve the amended appropriations for period, ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
A motion. Our second.
It's been moved. And second, Ms. Allen, would you call the row?
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes for the approved amended appropriations.
And the last item that I have is a resolution to approve a permanent appropriations resolution for FY twenty-twenty-six. And so what this resolution is, appropriation resolution, is the best guess estimate of what we think might happen in, in FY twenty-six. So the total, you can see, is only fifty-two million. Like I said, right now, the grants are not, have not dropped in. The federal grants, we don't know how much they're gonna do. So Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Adams and I decided, we're just gonna put in ten percent less than what we received last year, and then hopefully we'll get more, but that, that was a starting point. And so all of this is just, like I said, estimate of what I thought might be for FY twenty-six. So I am asking for your approval to at least start us out with this fifty-two million dollars, and that includes all of the funds. And then as, as appropriations are amended, the amended appropriations will come to the Board for your approval. And like I said, it's the best guess estimate that I could do. So I'm asking for your approval.
Let's see, do we have any questions, folks?
Questions?
So I need a, a motion to approve the permanent appropriation resolutions for twenty-twenty-six.
A motion.
A second.
Ms. Allen, it's been properly moved. And second, would you call the row?
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes for the resolution to approve the permanent appropriations for twenty-twenty-six.
And that is the end of my report.
Next up is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. I just have two items this evening. The first is the approval of the public notice resolution to reemploy one instructional coach. This resolution is for Lisa Welton. Lisa Welton is our instructional coach at the Early Learning Center, and she, along with those staff members, a couple of those staff members, the principal over there, have been very prominent in what we believe are gonna be some, some outstanding, some outstanding and some outstanding information about the progress of our, of our kids over at the Early Learning Center. And Ms. Welton, we have encouraged her and asked her to come back and help support us. She will not be working every day. She will not be working every day, but because of the statute, we have to go through this process. But we are really excited about the news that we're, our preliminary news that we're getting about our, our first graders going to second grade, and we'll, we'll probably have all of the data next, next, next Board meeting to kind of share with, with the Board, but Ms. Welton has been very instrumental in, in the fact that we believe preliminarily that almost seventy to seventy-five percent of those kids, second to third grade, are going to third grade, reading on track. And we are really excited about that.
Guess that's third grade.
Really excited about that. So we, we wanna bring Ms. Welton back and, and, you know, have her back in the fold to help us continue that progress that we're making. So I need, I do need approval of that.
Mr. Howard, did you say third graders or second graders?
Second, first going to second. These are first graders going to second grade.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
And the reason, Mr. Howard, again, that we had to do the public resolution for this employment, was she had retired?
She retired. She was one of the retirees.
Okay.
Yeah, she was one of the retirees from last week, and, and in order for her to get back in the fold?
Okay.
We have to go, now, she could wait several months, and then we wouldn't have to go through the process, but because we wanna get her back in the fold, and she's agreed to come back and help support us?
Okay.
We wanna, you know, wanna get her back in the, in the buildings and the classrooms and get that process going.
Are there any questions? Did I need a motion to approve the public notice resolution to reemploy one second-grade teacher?
Motion.
A second.
It's been moved. And second, Ms. Allen, would you call the row?
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you. The next item is the personnel agenda. I did send the Board the updated agenda with the, the additional names for specifically science of reading, and the question came up about event staff. There was a question about that, and I wanted to clarify. All of the event staff that you see on the personnel agenda, they do not work all the time. They work on an as-needed basis. If we have a football game, there will be more event staff. If we have a low-attended volleyball game, there may be only one or two of those individuals that work. But we get them all out of the, out of the way in the sense of getting them approved early, and we really monitor who works. Mr. Smith and his team do a good job of making sure that we are not overstaffed for those events, but that is why you see all of those individuals for event staff. Some of these people on this list will never work. Some of them will never work, their schedules don't work out, but they, they express an interest, and then we try to schedule them, and then they make a determination that they don't work. But that is why you see that large group for event staff on, on the, on the agenda. And then outside of that, including the science reading training, you've seen those all year, a couple resignations, and a couple new hires as well. And as we move through the summer, you'll see how, you know, and you guys that have been on the Board for a while, you'll see how this, this, this agenda starts to, starts to get robust as we move through the summer and head into the beginning of the year. Trying to get everybody hired and get every, everything staffed. And the science of retraining, again, is reimbursed to us by the state, so that is not money that we are, that we are paying. That is money that is reimbursed by the state.
Well, that was my question that I had about the event staffs. Are there any other questions?
And you said the science of reading is reimbursed.
The state reimburses us for the science of reading. So we, that is not an expense that the district occurs.
Thank you.
And I actually have to upload this spreadsheet that Mrs. Murdock sends over. And so everything, everybody has to be approved first, and then we send that to the, well, actually, they're then paid, and then we send the information to the state, and then the state member sends us, sends us a check through the state foundation.
And June thirtieth, Monday, is the last day the state will reimburse us for the science of reading. All staff was supposed to be completed that are required to take the science of reading training. All staff is supposed to have it done by Monday. And I think we were about down to, I don't know, maybe fifteen or so that needed to get it done, fifteen or twenty. And we're, we're still working through that to make sure that they get, get that training complete.
Think they don't?
If they don't, then there is another process that we have to go through from the standpoint of, um, our, um, internal employee holder conduct. Because this is not a Trippwood Madison law. This is, this is the governor of Ohio.
Yes.
And, and, and the state. So, uh, they, they've given us some, some guidance on how to address, address those concerns, those issues.
Any other questions? I need a motion to approve the personnel agenda.
A motion.
A second.
Ms. Allen has been properly moved in second. Would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes to approve the personnel agenda. Next up is discussion items and updates.
All right. There were two, um, discussion items that I was asked to bring information to the board, uh, this evening in your folder, as I've, as I provide, uh, to you guys every evening. The first wa- I mean, every board meeting, I'm sorry. The first was just a general update on how summer, summer schools is going, or summer program in a sense. Um, I provided, um, document A, which is a document that just gives a little information with regards to where we are. As you can see, the expected enrollment from, for K five was sixty, and we've got over a hundred kids. Well, at, right now, it's over a hundred kids. I think it's about a hundred and one or a hundred and two. Uh, six-eight expected enrollment was one twenty-five. We have sixty enrolled. Uh, expecting enrollment for the high school, which we were really excited about, was one twenty-five, and we have a hundred and twenty-seven enrolled. The additional opportunities, twenty-three enrolled in the Sylvan Learning Center. We're paying for that group through a grant. And the graduation alliance, summer credit recovery program, there are seven active students and five that are pending. And then on the second page, uh, which is some, some news that I'm kind of excited about, as you can see with the summer school program at the high school, uh, there were a hundred and thirty-nine initially registered, a hundred and eleven of those reported, sixteen more were added for the total of a hundred and twenty-seven. As of now, fifty-one of those students have made up all of the necessary credit recovery courses and are back on track for graduation. And an additional fifty have recovered at least a half a credit so far. So this speaks to that conversation we have at the beginning of the year and throughout the year about where our kids are as far as being on track for graduation. And, and I want to, uh, I want to give the, the high school, Mr. McCray, his counselor staff, his assistant principals, Mrs. Murdock and her team, I, I wanna give them a, uh, you know, a big nod, because our intent was to focus on those ninth and tenth graders that were behind and those seniors, those eleventh graders that, that were, um, that, that were off track by one or two here or there. And there we, this data right here shows that fifty-one percent of them have got, I mean, fifty-one of them have gotten, gotten back on track already. So we're excited about that. And then there's a little other information about, about, uh, what's going on at the middle school. Um, the elementary program. Uh, Mr. Brenner, can you pull that, that, that PDF up? The elementary program, which is the, um, the Champions Program, has also provided some information with regards to what's going on at the Champions Program. This is our K, K five program over at, at, uh, Westbrook that we partner with Champions with. So in your, uh, binder, I've also provided you a copy of this. It's not in the same order. But that, that is just a, um, just updates and copies of their newsletters that they sent home, copies of pictures and, and some things that they've done over the summer. Lot of interactive things going on over at the Champions Program. We're, we're really happy with, uh, with what we, what we seen, what we have seen so far with the partnership. Um, they have their own staff. They have, uh, uh, s- all of the kids, a hundred plu- like I said, a hundred kids over there. They go on field trips. I went over there one day, and I had to, I had to change my mindset because it was, it was so loud. And I'm used to going over during the school year and hearing a different, hear, hearing a different volume level. But I remembered to myself, and I had to remind myself, Howard, this is summer camp in a sense.
Yep.
You know, they are doing some, they are doing some engaging and some, some instructional activities, but they're also having fun. And, and, and we want to, uh, we wanna make sure we highlight that, and kids, you know, kids still have those opportunities to have fun and have some engaging activities. Their staff has been doing a good job. So I wanted to make sure I shared all of this information with regards to the Champions Program and what's going on over there. Each grade level has, um, in, in your, in your folder, they have a, uh, a newsletter that you'll see, and they have all the activities that they, um, that they've done. They've gotten with the fire department. They, they, they've done a lot, lot of good stuff over there. And again, there is definitely an academic component to help support, uh, that summer learning laws, or as they call it, summer slide. But they're also doing a lot of fun things, uh, that are, that are keeping the kids engaged. All right? So that is a copy for you guys. Um, you'll pro- probably start to see less and less color as we start to, start to save money, but I said, because these pictures of the kids were so nice, I said, I'll make this one in color, but that's gonna cease here in a little bit. And the, uh, the next item, item, uh, under discussion items would be identified as, uh, B in your folder. It is the, just a summer calendar of events for what's going on here in the district with us as, uh, you know, as we hit July. Uh, July is June, we settle down, we close things, we start planning. July, we really start ramping up and, and, and start putting things in action. As, uh, as you can see, the, um, the twenty-third through the twenty-fifth, all of the district administrators will be attending the Professional Learning Communities Institute in Indianapolis, Indiana. It is a, uh, it is a, uh, conference-style institute that we're taking our, taking our admin team to. And it follows up with the, the PLC training we had two weeks ago here in the district. And we're really gonna push hard on the implementation of professional learning communities and the expectations that we have for our administrative team and our staff here, uh, with regards to that. Our district administrative retreat is gonna be on the twenty-eighth and the twenty-ninth. New staff orientation is gonna be on the thirtieth and the thirty-first. Um, on Friday, the first of August, Montgomery County Educational Service Center has their, their, um, county kickoff where all of the districts will be meeting. And there's, uh, legislative updates and things that are just going on in education as a whole. And it's usually about, it's usually about half a day, and they serve us lunch. The second is the Back to School Bash. Uh, the Back to School Bash right now is scheduled from eleven to two. And this year, we're gonna have it in the high school. We're gonna start promoting that high school gymnasium. Uh, if it's ni- nice, we might have it out on the high school complex. It just depends on what things are, are looking at, looking like as far as the weather's concerned, but we're still continuing to work through that. But, uh, the second scheduled from eleven to two. Convocation is on the fifth. Convocation's on the fifth, and that usually starts at nine and go from maybe nine till about ten, fifteen, ten-thirty. Uh, it'll start with breakfast at eight. Uh, then we got district PD days. We got our safety meetings, safety training and building, building trainings. And then the eighth is a teacher work day, and the eleventh is the first day for kids. Kids will be back on the elevens. So I wanted to make sure I put a calendar in you guys' hands so you can just see what's going on. Uh, we'll probably start sending a lot of communications out to families as we start hitting in July, reconnecting with them, uh, letting them know that, you know, before you know it, we'll be opening our doors. But, uh, July first is when, when we really start, we start ramping up and getting ourselves ready to go. And those were the only two updates, discussion items that, uh, that I had to see.
I do have a question. The Back to School Bash, are we gonna, I guess, um, have like counselors and available for enrollment?
Yes. Yes. Uh, traditionally, we have had, um, we've had community vendors. We've had, um, all of the buildings will have a table. Uh, guidance counselors will be there if there are any questions. Uh, and, and when I say vendors, vendors that are not selling things, but, but community resources. Let me, let me, yeah, let me say that. Our community resources, the library, the city, uh, public health, all of those folks are, um, have already been invited. This is the first year since I've, I've been up here that I'm hands-off on that, because that has always been my thing. But, uh, I've turned that over to somebody else, and, and they'll probably take it and, and, and run with it at this point, because it's a good group, a good team that's working on it. But, uh, yeah, it's, it's always a good time. The band will play, and, you know, we'll have, we'll have food. Folks will come out, and we'll give them a ticket if they go to their table. They have to go to their table of the, the child, the school, the child, the teens. If they go to their table and ask questions, they get a ticket. And that ticket is usually good for a free meal, slice of pizza, hamburger, bag of chips and a pop. And, uh, we'll do that, um, we'll do that. This year, we're gonna do it over at the high school.
And my other, one last question that I have is about, um, the, like, the freshman academy.
So Mr. McCray and I talked the other day because he actually called me because he wanted to bring a guest speaker in. I can't remember the exact date, but it is, it is happening, and I will get that, I will get that from, from him. It, it's usually that week before the, when the, when the staff comes back. So the staff comes back on the fifth, so it's usually that first week. But I will get, I will get that information, because he and I just talked about trying to, uh, find a small amount of funding for, uh, the guest speaker that he wanted to bring in for, for his freshman, uh, for his freshman and our transition. So I, I will send him a text, and, and I'll get that information to you, shoot it to you, on what that actual date is.
Do you think it'll be one to two days or?
It's usually one day.
Okay.
Yeah, it's usually one day. We bring them to the high school. We feed them. They stay till maybe around one.
Okay.
One or two, uh, walk the class schedules. And, and last year, I think we even invited some parents. Parents came and did, uh, you know, did the tour, walked with them. Yeah, but yeah, it's usually one day.
No, I know. I think maybe a month ago or two months ago, Mr. Howard, there was a preschool open house. Do you know if we, how, how well?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the numbers on, on that yet, but we did have our preschool open house.
Okay.
Uh, I, I can get those numbers too, just to see who's registering.
Right.
As of, um, as of last year, we still had a, um, a small waiting list, nowhere near where it had been.
Okay.
But, um, a small waiting list. But I, I'll get those numbers and see how many we have registered.
I had a couple Kenyewanda families that attended, but I'm not sure if they got in or not.
Okay, I will find out, find out what our registration looks like.
All right.
Any treacherous comments?
I don't have any this evening.
Okay. Back to you, Mr. Howard.
Okay, real quick, I just have the, um, I have the calendar for the, um, twenty-five, twenty-six board meetings. Um, that is attached, not attached, but it's on your folder. I just wanted to make sure everybody had a copy of that. And as Ms. Allen sta- stated earlier, just to kind of reiterate, you know, what, uh, what we talked about, you know, with that whole House Bill ninety-six, we, we are still in the process of digging down and trying to figure out what that means for, for Trippwood Madison City Schools. Every district in the state of Ohio is trying to figure that out right now. And the one caveat that hasn't been discussed yet is that the governor still has line item veto power. So it's out of the state house, it's out of the senate, now it has to go to the governor. And there are some huge lobby groups that are, um, putting some proposals and, and some, and some plans together to try to, to reach him. We, we don't know, you know, what, what his thoughts are. He may be for it, he may be against it, who knows? Uh, the, the governor passed, has, has done some things surprisingly to benefit public education, but, you know, we don't know in this day and time if he, if he still has that same mindset. So we'll see. And once that happens, once it comes back from, um, from the governor, then we'll, we'll know what the actual legislation is. And then everybody's gonna be working to try to figure out how, how that affects all of us. Other than that, um, hopefully, uh, we have some good news, uh, here in the next couple of weeks, and we'll, we'll talk about that a little more with regards to our negotiations, and we'll, we'll share that a little, we'll share a little bit more information with you guys about that. But, um, that's really it. We're moving along. It is already July. Unbelievable. We've been out of school a month plus a couple of days already. Before you know it.
It'd be Christmas.
Starting back early this year, isn't it?
It's, it's about the same over the last couple of years. I mean, last maybe ten or fifteen years. It's usually about that second week of August. It's my custodians always just, they're pulling their hair out, because, you know, it used to be the first week of June, you know? But now it's, you know, now we, we're going early in the middle of, uh, middle of August these days, so I get those buildings together. Moving fast. That's it. That's all I got.
Um, eight board comments. Mrs. Carrington?
Um, we don't have a crowd today, so, but I still would like to thank all of the staff for the hard work and the great job that they're doing. Um, I think when we go over our summer programs, the amount of students that have, um, enrolled and that are really getting something out of it, it shows that if you put the work in, the results will show in our favor. Um, I'm just so excited about the work that we're doing together. And it's something different when you work together. You get the best results. And I think our students are starting to show that, and I think our district is starting to see that. And I hope we just, I hope we just continue to work together in a positive manner that is in the best interest of the children. Um, just kudos to everybody who's been working hard to get our students ready for the real world, and I'm just so thankful. And it's just, it's just amazing to be a part of this. So thank you, thank you all.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Um, I don't have many comments today, but, um, I hope, I hope everyone is enjoying their summer.
Okay. Vice President, Mrs. Simmons?
Um, I would just like to, um, from our Trippwood Madison School, um, community, um, send condolences to Chamanat Julianne and the young man that they lost. Um, we have been there. We know how that feels. So sending positive, um, thoughts and warm feelings to the Chamanat Julianne community. Um, again, uh, congratulations to our high school for recruiting so many students and getting good results this summer. Um, that's something that we were really striving for, and I think we, um, hit the mark. Um, fifty, having fifty-two students on track, that is commitment to Mr. McCray and his team and his staff over at the high school. Um, the champion program at the elementary level, um, it is nice, um, in the summer. You should be learning, and it should be fun all year round, but happy to see that going on here in our community. And just hope everyone is enjoying their summer and staying safe. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, I too want to send condolences on the behalf of the Trippwood community to the Chamanat family and community. Such a tragic loss. So our condolences. Um, again, kudos to, um, the students who have taken the initiative to, um, move forward in making progress, um, in credit recovery, high school and summer school. Um, I think it is wonderful, and as Mrs. Carrington had said, it's, it, it takes all of us, and, um, we're happy that we are seeing some improvement. Um, also, just hats off to the summer program, the C-Serge program. I was reading through some of that, and it's just remarkable what our students can do once they have been introduced. So kudos to them. Um, and then I wanted to just tell the parents, don't wait to the last minutes for enrollment. Um, get ahead of the game and start being prepared for, um, the upcoming school year. As Mr. Howard said, we're almost in July, so we are rolling, um, looking forward to the Back to School Bash, and looking forward to, um, phenomenal upcoming school year.
And with that, we said, next, um, I need a motion to move into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, discipline, dismissal, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public official. charges or complaints against a public official, employee, official agency, or regulated individual per policy, zero one six six, and ORC one two one point two two, G one, and to prepare for, to prepare for, conduct or review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment per ORC one two one point two two. Action may be taken. I need a motion.
I'm motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Allen, it has been properly moved in second. Would you call the row?
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes. We will enter into executive session at six twenty.